The concession of the Rosemont Park Board of Education being held in accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act of the state of New Jersey. Notice of this meeting was sent to the Star Leisure, local source, the Home News Tribune, the Borough Clerk, school offices and the district website. Roll call please.
Mark Fernandez.
Here.
Lucy Figurito. Z Infante.
Here.
President Dr. Brittany Kirkland.
Here.
Cindy Mago.
Here.
Jennifer McCarr.
Here.
Chris Monroe. Constance Quintella.
Here.
Vice President Michael Anne Regan.
Here.
Please stand for the flag salute. Executive session. Resolve that the Rosemont Park Board of Education meeting hereby convenes to executive session for the discussion of the following subjects. One, personnel matters. Two, attorney-client privilege. Three, student matter. It is anticipated that the executive session will take approximately two hours. The board may take action during public session. The board shall return to public session following executive session at approximately seven thirty PM. The minutes of the executive session will be released to the public when the reason for the executive session no longer exists. Can I have a motion to go into executive session? Is there a second? Great, all in favor? We are now officially in executive.
Thank you.
Hello, everyone. Can I have a motion to return to public session?
Motion.
Is there a second? All in favor? Great. Public participation, agenda items only. Each member of the public may speak a maximum of three minutes. Please state your name and address for the record.
Thank you. I want, can I repeat myself? Jackie Garcia, Roseville Park, agenda items nineteen and twenty. I wanted to take a moment to express my deep appreciation that has brought us to this point, where the board is considering the approval of field trips to the sensory-friendly park on Fayette Avenue in front of Aldine Elementary School. What began as a conversation about whether the sensory-friendly park was being fully utilized, turned into an opportunity to reimagine how that space can serve all the children, not just those children with different abilities. Parents made it clear. Parents made it clear that they didn't want the space removed, they simply wanted a better understanding of its purpose and potential. And tonight, through your approval, we take a step forward with that clarity and commitment. A survey conducted by the Roseville Park CPAC group resulted in majority of the parents supporting moving forward with hosting inclusive play, events, and programs in collaboration with the school district. Creating opportunities led by occupational therapists and early childhood professionals to build engagement and reinforce the park's purpose. Agenda items nineteen and twenty is a result of months of thoughtful coordination between the Roseville Park Special Education Parents Advisory Group, the Director of Special Services, Ms. Gil Galen, the Occupational Therapist, Mr. Robertello, the Aldine Elementary PTO, and the families across the district. It is truly a community effort. By integrating field trips to the sensory-friendly park, we are giving our students the chance to experience inclusion in action, to understand that this space exists for everyone. It's not just a quiet corner in the fifth ward, it's a symbol of belonging, understanding, and equity. I just wanted to thank you all for your consideration tonight in approving agenda items nineteen and twenty. Thank you.
Okay, seeing no one else, I am going to close the public participation section on agenda items only. Next, we're gonna move into our principals' report, and first we'll hear from Ms. Costa.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you. Thank you for having myself and Mr. Kane here this evening to talk a little bit about the high school in the spring. So, we just want to celebrate the incredible accomplishments of our students during this past spring. It's been a season filled with achievement, creativity, and school spirit. And there is so much to be proud of. I want to start by recognizing our Technology Student Association at the state conference at the College of New Jersey last month, earlier this month. Our students competed in over twenty events, including music production, software development, fashion design, flight endurance, virtual reality, just to name a few. Their hard work paid off in a big way, with several of our students advancing to nationals in Tennessee this summer. I want to thank the board personally for making, again, that a priority in our budgeting. It's a phenomenal experience for our students, and it leads to many of our students coming back and continuing to be involved in the high school, coming back as teachers, coming back as mentors. We took first place in the drone challenge. So, in all of New Jersey, our high school students, Little Roseville Park, built the best drone and won. So, that's pretty amazing. Second place in architectural design. We're competing against gigantic, state-of-the-art schools where STEM is the number-one thing in their curriculum. And we took second place in architectural design in the entire state of New Jersey. Third place in 2D CAD architecture. And that architecture teacher is a student who was in one of the first classes to be involved in the Technology Student Association. She went to, I forget where they went, but she won first place in wherever they were, Orlando, as a student, and now she's back as a teacher. And we took third place in robotics and fashion design. So, to support their trip, the TSA students hosted a color run this past weekend. I want to again thank you for all of your support with that. Many, many runners participating, a great community event that I know will blossom into just an excellent fundraiser for this group. In the arts, we've reached a new milestone. Multiple students have qualified for the state teen arts finals this year. That's something that we have never had before. We have students in art, but this is the first time in school's history that we've had band members and dancers qualify as well. So, they will proudly represent Union County at the state showcase on June 2nd. So, think about Little Roseville Park High School, all of the schools in Union County go, and we took first to be able to go on to the state against all of the other counties. So, it's truly tremendous what we do in the arts here. I also want to speak about our band. Let's hear it for our marching band who earned their highest score ever, placing fifth out of thirty-three bands this year, a true testament to their commitment and teamwork. In our media, RPTV is looking better than ever. I would love for you to poke your heads in the studio. We have a brand-new broadcast desk. It's a desk that goes the full length of the studio. It's handcrafted by our Advanced Wood students. So, for our students to come in, build the desk, make it fully functional, but more than that, it's ADA accessible. We have a student in RPTV that's in a wheelchair. We're able to lift that desk up so that he can fit right under it. So, it's just amazing teamwork, cross-curricular. And a big congratulations to RPTV member Maya, who was named a finalist in the Emerging Screenwriters Competition through Montclair Film. That happened in the beginning of May. Our talent show is coming up at the end of May. It's put on by our Arts and Honors Society, and our spring concert will take place on June 4th. And finally, let's not forget about Matilda the Musical. Thank you to everyone. A lot of teachers here that came out and supported Matilda. We sold out almost every single show. I think the one day, we had like two rows total left. So, just incredible work of our cast crew and everyone behind the scenes. Finally, I don't want to keep going, but it's been a fun spring. We also want to recognize the powerful assembly we experienced earlier today. Thank you for approving that at past board meetings. We had the power of life and death with Jason Lehman come in, and it was made possible by the Roseville Park Municipal Alliance and the Borough's opioid fund. It's just amazing when the town can give to the schools and our students benefit. It was a really good, really good assembly today. It was about the importance of wise decision-making, and our seniors will be experiencing it tomorrow before they head off to prom. So, it's the perfect assembly before we set them free for prom. So, it's been a remarkable year in academics, the arts, and leadership, and we're so proud of our students at the high school who continue to raise the bar. At this time, I'd like to turn it over to our Assistant Principal of Athletics, Mr. Kane, who will share highlights from our incredible year of Panthers sports. Thank you all.
Thank you, Ms. Costa. Good evening to our members of the Board of Ed, our Superintendent Ms. Goys, Ms. Mauer, colleagues, and members of the Roseville Park community. This has been an incredibly exciting, rewarding year for me personally, for Roseville Park Athletics as a whole. As my first year in this role, I approached the position with a philosophy rooted in two guiding principles, respect and observation. Wanted to take the time to learn the unique culture of Roseville Park, to appreciate the strong traditions already in place, and to understand how I could best support and continued growth and success of our student athletes and our athletic programs. Roseville Parks is a district with a proud athletic history. Our coaches, families, and communities have long taken pride in our programs, and that pride is reflected in the way our students compete with integrity, dedication, and heart. At the core of our athletic philosophy is the belief that winning is a byproduct of doing the little things right, controlling the controllables, being disciplined, and committed to the process. That belief continues to guide all that we do. This year, we had a robust participation across all three sports seasons: three hundred and forty-six student athletes in the fall, two hundred and eight in the winter, and two hundred and seventy-nine in the spring. What's particularly impressive, given the size of our district, is how many of these young men and women are multi-sport athletes. Not only does this give them a chance to train year-round, but it also allows them to grow physically, mentally, and emotionally through their diverse experiences. While our spring season is still underway, I'm proud to share that Roseville Park has had, has, teams have already earned five conference championships this school year, with our most recent title coming this past week in softball. Very good. Across the board, twelve of our athletic programs, we offer fourteen, qualified for the NJSA postseason play, and as of today, boys and girls track and tennis are still competing. Notably, softball, still competing, is currently ranked number one in Central Group One. And that's an incredible accomplishment that speaks volumes about dedication and hard work. And if that stands through the cutoff tomorrow, it means that the road to the state sectional championship will have to go through Roseville Park's fields. Even as I have spent most of my year observing and learning, I'm proud to say we have launched several important new initiatives in collaboration with our athletic staff, our administration, and our community. NCAA Signing Days, they were held twice this year to honor our student athletes continuing their academic and athletic journeys at the collegiate level. These special events were generously supported by the Dads Club, who hosted a celebratory breakfast for our athletes and their families after the event was held in the gym. We had eight total sign to move on and continue their academics and athletics in college next year. We launched a new athletics Instagram account to better highlight the achievements of our teams and our players and keep the community better informed. That you'll be seeing pretty soon coming up is how do registers sign up for fall athletics? The whole process, checking family ID, and then I'll get ahead of myself. We began offering in-school sports physicals during the winter in addition to our traditional spring offerings in partnership with CareStation. This initiative increases access for students across the district and ensures more are able to participate safely in athletics. We hosted an eighth-grade athletics assembly at the Roseville Park Middle School to build excitement for high school sports. Every varsity coach introduced their program and encouraged students to get involved. To maintain that momentum, I created a Google Classroom that includes all eighth graders, their families, and our high school coaches to keep the lines of communication open and engagement high. This year also marked a first for our track and field team as we officially introduced the pole vault event. With the support of the business office and our coaching staff, we procured equipment and trained athletes, and I'm thrilled to report that Roseville Park scored points in this event at the Union County Conference Championship for the first time ever. We've also created a partnership with the Roseville Park Tap Into, and that we've connected many of our writers in the newspaper club, and I've had to write a couple myself, but- and I've had to write a couple myself, but articles that can be posted to highlight our students and our teams posted on the Tap Into Roselle Park. So, as you see, things that are being posted there and pictures, that's a collaboration with RPTV, with photography students, with newspaper students that are writing articles. That's coaches sending season recaps and season previews to these, to our writers who are generating these articles, getting credit for the publication as a student writer and being published online for the Tap Into. Looking ahead, we're also embracing technology and innovation to enhance our athletic experience. We are now officially a huddled district. This partnership will allow us to film games, stream events for free, analyze performances, create recruiting highlights, manage ticket sales digitally, and even open doors to financial sponsorship through advertising. It's a game changer for our programs and our visibility. Beyond athletics, the Roselle Park High School administrative team is gearing up for an exciting end of the year. Tomorrow evening, as mentioned, our seniors will celebrate their prom at the Sapphire Grand Banquet Hall in Woodbridge. Just last night, right here, we honored the newest members of National Honor Society, and believe it or not, there are only twenty-nine days until graduation. In closing, I want to extend my sincere gratitude to the Board of Education, Superintendent Goist, and Ms. Mauer for your support throughout this year. Also want to thank Ms. Costa, Mr. Foye for the mentorship and encouragement. Made a tremendous difference and helped me feel immediately like I was part of the team. Finally, to our families and community, especially those involved in athletics, thank you for welcoming me with such a warm partnership. I'm excited for what lies ahead and looking forward to year two. Thank you very much.
Okay, I'll say the names, and then Pete will hand them out. That way, we get everyone. So, we have our students here to recognize for recognition from the athletics throughout the seasons. I want to start with girls' basketball. Sidney Smith scored a thousand points, adding her name to the wall. Second team, All Group One, led New Jersey in points per game at thirty-three point one. So, you have to come up here, students, and then you have to stay up here, okay? So, after you get your certificate, just go, you can stand right off to the side right there, and then I'll pull you back up. In boys' basketball, Elfris Garcia, Valley First Team. Congratulations, Elfris. He was one of our students at the signing ceremony. FDU, I remembered. In bowling, Michael Martin's First Team, All Group One. Three hundred game, Second Team, All State, and the Union County Runner-Up. Going to school, will be bowling in college. Are you wearing your shirt right now? Lauren Stuck. Is that where we're going? Yep, okay. Camila, also in bowling, Camila Cruz Codaro, Union County Runner-Up, State Qualifier. Girls' wrestling, Jasmine Fanaraga, First Team, All Union County Conference, Union County Champ, one hundred and thirty-two. Also in girls' wrestling, Ava Forstenhauser, First Team, All Union County Conference, State Qualifier, one hundred and fifty-two. Also in girls' wrestling, first year of the program, recognizing three of these athletes. Lucia Ranieri, First Team, All Union County Conference, All Union County Conference Female Wrestler of the Year, Union County Champ, one hundred and twenty pounds. Third in New Jersey, third in New Jersey at one hundred and twenty pounds, North Region Champ, one hundred and twenty pounds. Congratulations. Did I say it right? In boys' wrestling, Angel Lopez, First Team, All American Division. What did I say? Did I say All American Division? It's All Mountain Division. Yes, I'm sorry. I heard the "oo" and I was like, I did it wrong. I knew I did it wrong. And Maxwell Griffin, also First Team, All Mountain Division. Diego Osario, First Team, All Mountain Division. And our fourth boys' wrestler, Anthony Sinofraca, First Team, All Mountain Division. Great job by our athletes. Great job by our students in the arts. Great job by the high school students this spring and this year. So proud to be your principal, and thank you, board members, for your constant support of our high school programs.
Congratulations to all of the students. Now, we are going to move into our student report.
I'd like to take this opportunity to thank the board for their involvement in the National Honor Society induction ceremony yesterday, as well as prom that is tomorrow in our athletics department. As I prepare to graduate on the eighteenth, I want to express my gratitude to RPHS for everything the school has done to prepare me for the next phase of my life. I had a wonderful college signing day earlier this month where I celebrated with my classmates the colleges and careers we'll be pursuing after graduation. We have multiple students going to very prestigious schools such as Princeton University, Fordham University, and Cornell University. There are also multiple seniors who are going to attend school on a full-ride scholarship. I will be attending Howard University in Washington, DC, majoring in political science on the pre-law track. I want to thank RPHS for the memories and for preparing me for the future. Some of my favorite memories include singing the tree song the other day with Ms. Costa and a couple of my other class beats, as well as participating in the school's Powderpuff my junior and senior year, as well as being able to participate in the New Jersey Scholars Program my junior year. As we come to a close on the year, we only have a few major events coming up. We have prom tomorrow at the Sapphire Grand in Woodbridge. Triumph is also hosting a talent show on the thirtieth, allowing students to show off their talents. Then, the seniors have the senior banquet on June seventeenth and graduation on the eighteenth. Thank you for everything.
Thank you, Yana. And now, we're gonna move into committee reports. I will start from my right, and we can work our way down.
There we go. This mic works. Mic check, mic check. Thank you so much, Superintendent Goist and President Kirkland. I just, I wanted to reiterate what Mrs. Costa had said about the musical. I was able to, and I know a lot of us were able to attend, and just to acknowledge the incredible collaboration between our arts and athletics communities. I think the more that we work together, the more that we see how athletic dance is and how musical, you know, a bowling ball can be, you know? And just seeing the connection that we're building and the growth that we've had this year is incredible. So, again, congratulations to those students, and thank you.
The Special Education Committee met on April tenth and May fifteenth. Our next subcommittee meeting will be held on June twelfth.
Okay, great. And now, we are gonna move into our superintendents' report.
Good evening, everyone. As we enter the final stretch of the school year, just three weeks away and about nineteen days left, I wanted to take a moment to reflect on the incredible pride I feel for our students, our staff, and our schools. Tonight, I'm happy to share a few highlights that showcase the excellence, dedication, and heart of the Roselle Park School District. In celebrating our inclusive education excellence, I'm thrilled to announce that Roselle Park School District has been selected to present at the Summer Inclusion Leadership Conference at King University on June sixth. This is a tremendous honor, as only select districts from across the state are invited to share their best practice in inclusive education. The following team members will be presenting and representing Roselle Park School District. Ms. Pataglia, Middle School Special Education Teacher, Ms. Howell, Middle School ELA Teacher, Ms. Becker, Robert Gordon CST member, Ms. Gil Galen, District Special Education Director, myself, and Ms. Keduga as the Middle School Principal. This recognition speaks volumes about our district's commitment to creating learning environments where all students can thrive. Congratulations to our Special Education Department, Robert Gordon CST, Middle School Special Education Team, and administrators for this outstanding achievement. I am so humbled to be part of this amazing team and to present side-by-side with them. And we have a spotlight in the NJEA Review Magazine. We're very proud to share that Ms. Pisano from Robert Gordon School is quoted in the last edition of the NJEA Review Magazine, page eighteen, for you guys to read. The article discusses solutions to the ongoing special education teacher shortage, and Mrs. Pisano is highlighted as one of the success stories from the NJCTL Teacher of Students with Disabilities endorsement program. Thank you. This recognition further reinforces the talent and dedication of our staff and the impact they're having both within and beyond our community. And yesterday morning, I had the distinct pleasure of attending the fortieth annual Union County Scholars Breakfast, where two of our own seniors, Jeffrey Lynn, who is heading to the University of Virginia, and Georgelie Javier, attending Fordham University, were recognized as top scholars in Union County. Joined by their families, educators, and county leaders, Jeffrey and Georgie were celebrated for their academic excellence and inspiring futures. It was a beautiful reminder of the incredible talent and potential nurtured in our schools. Later that same evening, I attended the Roselle Park High School National Honor Society induction ceremony. It was a truly special event that honored our current NHS members and welcomed new inductees. This ceremony beautifully highlighted the core values we uphold in Roselle Park: scholarship, leadership, service, and character. Seeing our students beam with pride, supported by their families and teachers, reminded me once again why our school community is so special. A heartfelt thank you goes to our families and staff. Your continued support makes all these moments possible. A special thank you to Ms. Lemke and Ms. Burke, who co-advised the National Honor Society and for putting yesterday's program together. The May Superintendent Newsletter has also been printed and is available alongside tonight's agenda for your taking as we celebrate the many accomplishments happening across our schools. I hope you'll take a few moments to read and share in these highlights that reflect success and the spirit of our students. From April eighth to May twentieth, our residency investigator completed forty-two residency verifications, all of which were found to be in compliance. One pending investigation involving a student found to be domiciled in Roselle was completed, and the matter is scheduled to be heard before the board. The residency investigator also supported pre-K registration efforts for the twenty-five, twenty-six school year. During this process, one application was denied due to the student residing outside the district. In total, twelve surveillances involving five families were conducted to ensure the integrity of our enrollment process. This continued diligence helps ensure that our resources are supporting the students and families who rightfully reside within Roselle Park. And I thank our residency investigator and registration staff for their thorough and professional work. As a reminder, schools will be closed on Friday, May twenty-third, and Monday, May twenty-sixth for Memorial Day weekend. I hope you all find time to rest, reflect, and enjoy time with your loved ones. Let's continue to support one another and finish these final weeks strong. The work we do every day makes a lasting difference, and together, as one district and one family, we truly achieve more. Thank you, and wishing you all a great night.
Thank you for that wonderful report. And now, we are going to move into our agenda, starting with personnel. One, staff appointments. Two, substitute. Three, personnel appointment revision. Four, leave of absence extension. Five, paraprofessional change of assignment. Six, technology department transfer. Seven, staff resignation. Eight, maternity leave change. Nine, maternity leave replacement extension. Ten, maternity leave. Eleven, home instruction. Twelve, fall sports physical personnel. Thirteen, summer camp twenty-twenty-five. Fourteen, summer twenty-twenty-five child study team personnel. Fifteen, extended school year program. Sixteen, summer credit recovery program twenty-twenty-five. Seventeen, proctors for year twenty-twenty-four and twenty-twenty-five spring concert. And eighteen, chaperones and school nurse. Can I have a motion to approve the personnel section?
Motion.
Is there a second? Great. Any discussion? If not, roll call, please.
Mark Fernandez?
Yes.
Z Infante?
Yes.
Cindy Mago?
Yes.
Jennifer McCar?
Yes.
Chris Monroe?
Yes.
Constance Quintella?
Yes.
Vice President Regan?
Yes.
President Dr. Kirkland?
Yes.
Motion passed.
And now, we're moving to the education section. Nineteen, standard field trips. Twenty, field trip approval. Twenty-one, King University intern agreement. Twenty-two, practicum experience. Twenty-three, administrative experience. Twenty-four, ESS professional services contract for paraprofessional. Twenty-five, professional service contract extended school year twenty-twenty-five. Twenty-six, club activity for GSA. Twenty-seven, New Jersey State Teen Arts Festival. Twenty-eight, garden enhancement grant award. Twenty-nine, Occupation Day at Robert Gordon. Thirty, Roselle Park High School Technology Student Association Nationals. Thirty-one, bilingual program waiver twenty-twenty-three, twenty-twenty-four. Can I have a motion to approve the education section?
To make the motion?
Second.
Great. Any discussion? If not, roll call, please.
Mark Fernandez?
Yes.
Z Infante?
Yes.
Cindy Mago?
Yes.
Jennifer McCar?
Yes.
Chris Monroe?
Yes.
Constance Quintella?
Yes.
Vice President Regan?
Yes.
President Dr. Kirkland?
Yes, within abstention from number nineteen.
Number eighteen, I'm sorry?
Nineteen.
Nineteen, okay. Motion passed.
Moving to the business section. Thirty-two, monthly certification. Thirty-three, approval of bills. Thirty-four, treasury reports. Thirty-five, disposal of lighted art table. Thirty-six, broad grant projects. Thirty-seven, technology district contracts for twenty-twenty-five, twenty-twenty-six. Thirty-eight, tryout for hockey team. Thirty-nine, use of buildings and grounds. Forty, professional service contract business twenty-twenty-five for twenty-twenty-six. Forty-one, twenty-twenty-five, twenty-twenty-six food service contract renewal. Can I have a motion to approve the business section?
Motion.
Can I make a motion, a table forty C? Are you doing that?
Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
All in favor? Aye.
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 Aye. Okay.
And we need a second motion on the business right here.
Yep. And so, we need a second motion for the approval of the business section.
Motion.
Second.
Okay. Is there any further discussion on the business section? If not, roll call. If not, roll call, please.
Mark Fernandez?
Yes.
Z Infante?
Yes.
Cindy Mago?
Yes, but abstention on thirty-nine B.
Jennifer McCar?
Yes, with a no to number forty-one.
Chris Monroe?
Yes.
Constance Quintella?
Yes, with abstention to thirty-nine B.
Vice President Regan?
Yes.
President Dr. Kirkland?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Okay. Harassment, intimidation, bullying incidents, so agenda item number forty-two, harassment, intimidation, bullying incidents. And can I have a motion to approve the harassment, intimidation, and bullying incidents section?
I make the motion.
Great. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Vice President Regan?
Yes to all.
Mark Fernandez?
Yes to all.
Z Infante?
Yes to all.
Cindy Mago?
Yes to all.
Jennifer McCar?
Yes to all.
Chris Monroe?
Yes.
Constance Quintella?
Yes to all.
President Dr. Kirkland?
Yes to all.
Motion passed.
Great. Is there any continuing business? Is there any new business?
Yes. It's more of a question. So, I don't like to normally repeat rumors, but there is a rumor that the parking lot across the street that our students and staff use will be the parking lot for the apartment building, so they won't be able to use it anymore. Has anyone heard that?
It's not, it's a rumor. It's not true.
That's why I wanted to ask here, so it clears it up.
We are trying to get the students and the town to get some signage, to have the parking lot during the day for student and teacher parking only. But it is a municipal lot. Yeah, they're working on that.
Okay. Anything else, new business?
Okay, I have some new business. So first of all, I want to say congratulations to Dr. Brittany Kirkland. On May fifteenth, Dr. Brittany Kirkland was honored with the Community Excellence Award by the Rotary Club in recognition of her outstanding service and dedication. This prestigious award reflects Dr. Kirkland's lifelong commitment to public service, educational equity, and community empowerment. Congratulations, Dr. Kirkland, on this well-deserved recognition.
Thank you very much. I also was going to mention that event, because I wanted to highlight the Roseville Park student that they acknowledged, Kenesha Patel. She received a scholarship from the Rotary Club of Roseland, Roseville Park, so I wanted to give her a shout out and say congratulations again.
Now I have some liaison reports. CPAG met in hybrid format on May eighth. TJ Gavore, a BCBA and CPI instructor, gave an informative presentation on behavior and crisis intervention. The next CPAG meeting will take place in person at Sensory Park on June twelfth. It will be the annual end of year celebration. I hope to see everyone there. Sherman. March was Youth Art Month, a national celebration of art programs in our schools. Every March, Sherman School participates in Youth Art Month at county level and selects only three pieces of art to represent our schools. The students selected this year were a kindergartner, and I'm really sorry if I butcher somebody's name. I do apologize in advance. Charles Pobans, second grader Yambilla Salamanca, and fourth grader Ezekiel Mota. These students had their artwork exhibited at Liberty Hall Museum in Union, New Jersey. From this show, only seven pieces of artwork from the entire county are selected to go to the State Youth Art Month exhibit. I am proud to say that our kindergarten students in KM, Charles Pobans, had his artwork selected as one of the seven artworks to go to go to the State Youth Art Month exhibit held on, at the Grounds for Sculpture. Charles was recognized for his achievement at the Grounds for Sculpture on March twenty-ninth. In addition to the county and state Youth Art Month shows, the state also holds a Youth Art Month design contest. This year, third grader Elliot Washington participated and represented Sherman School. His artwork was also on display at the Union County Youth Art Month exhibit. Union County Dental Poster Contest. Every year, local dentists hold a countywide poster contest for fourth graders emphasizing the importance of brushing your teeth. This year, Sherman School had two finalists, Haley Acosta Concepcion and Savannah Toro. Both students were honored at a ceremony at Casa del Sol in Union in March. New Jersey Performing Arts Center exhibit. The Art Educators of New Jersey sponsor art exhibits in the Victoria Theater Lobby of NJPAC three to four times a year. The exhibit is a juried art show in which only thirty pieces of art are selected statewide from grades K to twelve. So far this year, the following students' artwork have been selected to be part of one of the exhibits at NJPAC. Fall, Eloise Delaney and Emmon Torres. Winter, Bailey Wilson. Spring, Evan Wenzel and Mylin Montalanos Rosas. Sherman's, some events for Sherman. Sherman's Spring Concert was tonight, the middle school. Their Buy One Get One Book Fair, is May twentieth and twenty-first, which is today and tomorrow. Sherman School will be participating in the Town Memorial Day Parade on May twenty-sixth. Field Day is May twenty-eighth. The Color Run is also May twenty-eighth. Sherman Carnival is June fourth. Pre-K Field Day is also June fourth. Fifth Grade Luncheon is June sixth. Sherman Awards are June ninth. Pre-K and kindergarten graduation is June eleventh. Fifth Grade Clapping is June thirteenth. End-of-year class parties are June seventeenth. And I also want to say that I did have a chance to go to Sherman School in April, and I actually went there on the day that they had their second grade wax museum, where the kids dress up as characters, and you push the little red button, and they tell you all about their character. It was amazing. The kids did a great job. So congratulations to all the people whose art was displayed at these amazing events, and great job.
I just want to congratulate the new high school PTO board. Wendy Gulick will be the president. Frank Agliardo is vice president. Vanessa Calucci is the new treasurer, and Leah Guano is the secretary. So if you guys have any problems next year at the high school, those are the people to reach out to.
Is there any other new business?
Yeah. Yohanna, I'm not sure if this is our last meeting with her, but just a huge shout out to your work and showing up here at every meeting. And I've seen you in the musical, I've seen you advocate for your peers, and I think I can speak on the board's behalf and say how proud of you we are, and how much we look forward to keeping our eyes peeled on your journey. So congratulations again.
Okay, now we are going to move into the public participation section of our agenda. Each member of the public may speak a maximum of three minutes. Please state your name and address for the record.
Sorry. Frank Agliardo, I just want to take an opportunity first to say that we just celebrated teacher's appreciation at the middle school, and it will be my last teacher appreciation week at the middle school. Yes, at the middle school. I'll be definitely missing doing it there, but be happy to bring it to the high school. Thanks to all the parents that helped out and donations that we received to appreciate these lovely teachers that we have directly behind me. I just want to take an opportunity to also that the picnic for the middle school is on the fourth, fifth, or sixth, depending on rain date. We are looking for mini bottles of water or ice pops that are in those like bags. So please, if you're willing to donate, just reach out to myself. What's that? Yeah, the flavored ice. I don't know what they're called. Just reach out to me, and again, I'm happy to take on the high school. I was only gone a year. So, thank you, guys.
I don't think I need the mic. I think you folks know that. Here representing the NJEA. I obviously have a different speech plan for tonight, but with that, I will say I'm really happy we did not end up filing the impasse paperwork, because I am thrilled, as I know you folks are, that we have a memorandum of agreement. And as you can see from this audience, the sea of red, we are thrilled. And I'll be brief, but I personally want to thank the board. I want to thank the administration, in particular Superintendent Gois, Patty Mauer, in particular, you know, and I extolled their virtues to you folks before. I am thrilled that we got this finished. And, you know, as the practice, the next thing we're going to do is we're going to prepare for ratification, but we see you, and we appreciate the fact that you see us. So thank you very much.
I just want to say thank you to Ted and to the union reps, because this was a process, but we are very happy they were able to come to a memorandum of agreement.
And my bodyguard, Nick Agolia. I usually am not at a loss for words, but Ms. Gois, Superintendent Gois, Dr. Kirkland, Ms. Mauer, Cindy, Z, Mark. Am I forgetting somebody? No, well, those were the negotiating people, right? I got that? Okay, good. Thank you. And the rest of the board, thank you so much for allowing us to come to an agreement. Yesterday, at Sherman, we planted a tree for Bernie. I don't do, okay, for Bernie Schultz, Bernadine Schultz. She was the chairperson for negotiation for years. Ms. Mauer, you worked alongside of her. And while we used the golden shovels that you guys were harboring at the board office to plant that tree, which was special, I thought to myself, what better day to get a phone call and to have this be what we need it to be? If I ever met a person who had a spirit of collaboration, of shaking hands, of giving a giant hug, I don't even think I'm worthy to talk about all the good things that Bernie brought to Roseville Park, but this whole thing ending so close to that really means a lot to my Sherman family. My RPA family, and I'll leave Nick to talk about the Roseville Park family.
Nick Agolia, excuse me. One-twenty Dalton Street. I did grow up in town, so I've always wanted to do that, so I do apologize. First of all, I can't thank you enough, Superintendent Gois, for everything she's done to support our staff, the people behind you, and all the buildings. Ms. Mauer, we've had tons of conversations over the last year. I want to thank Z, Dr. Kirkland, Mark for coming on, and I especially want to thank Cindy. She's been there since the beginning. It hasn't been easy. We've all stomped out of there at times, but we made it work. I can't thank you enough. Normally, I know this is a place where there's a lot of criticism that comes across this podium, but tonight we celebrate what we received from you and what we agreed upon, and we can't thank you enough. And I can't say enough that they deserve it. They are good people. They work hard, probably a lot harder than I do, being out in the field, but I do want you to realize that these people go above and beyond every single day. I watch teachers chase kids down the hall. They work with kids with special needs. They make sure they're getting. And one of the things that I want to highlight, you know, Ms. Madder Adana and I had a conversation last week, and she shared with me some of the schools that our seniors from Ms. Costa's building is, they're going to, and they are remarkable. They are, make me so proud to be Roseville Park alum, class of ninety-five. But thank you again. I can't, we're looking forward to it. Hopefully, you know, we will make you proud, and thank you again for everything you've done. These people are great.
Dr. Kirkland, I'd like to say a few words. So as the chair of the negotiation committee, it was a pleasure to work with the union and all the teachers on the other side of the aisle, but my personal feelings for my teachers at Robert Gordon, for the hard work that they do, you are seen, and the parents love you. So to all the teachers, thank you. Sorry, my bias is to Robert Gordon, but, you know, just again, thank you very much.
Dr. Kirkland, can I add something shortly? I've been hogging the mic all night. What's new? Yeah, some of you were my teachers. Some of you started teaching when I was still in school, and some of you, I, you know, I've only met in the hallways of the schools. And, you know, we were talking amongst ourselves about the value and the worth of our teachers and wanting to make sure that you see how we value you, and as representatives of this community, how this community values you. And while numbers are one thing, your being, you showing up every day and committing to these kids, because that's what we constantly come back to on this board, is acknowledging whatever our differences are, these kids bring us together. And I'm just excited that we have a memorandum of agreement so that we can move forward and continue to make progress, that this is just one step forward. This is just a step forward in many years and many contracts to come, that we hope to continue to be fair and to be honest and responsible. So thank you. Thank you so much for everything you do.
I mean, I think my fellow board members have said all the things that I would have said, but we're just very excited to be moving forward and to have completed this process. And again, just reiterating how much we value Roseville Park, the staff, and how much you love on the students is seen and greatly appreciated.
Hello, I'm Julie Boyce. Seton Avenue, an Aldean teacher. Again, thank you to the board. Thank you to the people who sat on negotiations with us, Cindy, all the way through the summer. It was a lot, but we made it through. A big thank you to Lauren and Nick and Michelle, the other members of the negotiating team. Lauren is our numbers person. I think she could go up against any number person in the state, and her numbers would be correct one hundred percent of the time. Nick, who was our Nick Island for negotiations, and Michelle and I, who were the fact checkers, who would go through every line, making sure that everything was the way it was supposed to be. Thank you to Ted for supporting us and allowing us to speak about our experiences and what we wanted for the teachers. A big thank you to all of the Roseville Park teachers. Where Roseville Park is a special town. I've lived here my whole life. My children went here. I went here, my husband went here. It's a special place, and to know that the board and the community realize that it is a special place with special teachers, teachers that we want to stay, and teachers that we want to attract to this town, this contract is a step in the right direction. So thank you, thank you, thank you. So, thank you, thank you, thank you.
About the eighth grade parent group, we were able to raise enough money so that every kid would be able to go to the dance completely for free. So I just wanted to mention that. One of the parents is here with us tonight. One of the parents was here tonight, she helped me out huge to help me raise that much money to, so that all the kids can go completely for free if they wanted to go. So thank you to all the parents, the eighth grade parents, anybody else that supported us, thank you.
Andrew Williamson, two hundred spring field at. So, we just got negotiation committee saying thank you, so of course I want to come up here too and give a big thanks as well. I had a whole thing I was going to read before, but you know what? I still, I was like, I gotta speak now. But if you don't know me, of course, I'm Andrew Williamson, I've been here nine years now at the, here in Roselle Park. And while I'm not here from Roselle Park, a lot of people might not realize, I've actually had a connection in Roselle Park for almost thirty years now. My first ever music teacher was a Roselle Park alumni, Frank Capello, which some of you might actually know out there in the audience. And he was a great inspiration to me to become a teacher and just knowing where he came from, the education he got, it made me comfortable just to even apply to this district and getting here. Great admin, very welcoming staff. You know, the board has always been supportive, the town's been supportive, and just seeing it over the nine years has made it be very comfortable to stay here and stay a part of this community. There's a lot of other districts out there, but there's really only one Roselle Park and just seeing how this community comes together. We just heard from the high school tonight about all the great things our tiny, tiny school can do, from the sports to the musicals to the TSA, to everything we do. So it's, it's great to see that we are seen, as everyone said, and thank you all so much for the support that you are giving us, the support you're giving up, everyone here in this room, and, you know, we're very thankful, so thank you so much.
I don't see anyone else, so I'm going to close the public participation portion of this agenda. So, I just want to mention the next scheduled regular board meeting will be an open session held on Tuesday, January, June seventeen twenty-twenty-five at five PM. And the board meeting will be held here in the Roselle Park High School auditorium. So can I have a motion for adjournment?
Motion.
I'm sorry, was there a motion? Motion. And also, I say five PM because executive starts at five PM, to be clear. All in favor?
Aye.
Great, this meeting is adjourned. Thank you and have a great night.